At that end, I would start moving off with a roll call vote for attendants. Mr. Frazier from Daxton District?
Here.
Ms. Donahue from Wakefield District?
Here.
Mr. Whitson from Hampton District?
He's being unmuted.
Thank you.
I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Here. Mr. Parrish from Stonewall Hall, Mr. Parrish?
Thank you.
And I'm Ms. Smith, the Chair and Board Supervisor, and Representative for the Park District. And Mr. Curry is our FOIA Officer. Is there anything else that can be discussed for getting at this meeting?
You should note that the meeting is being conducted in accordance with the continuity of government ordinance that was adopted by the Board Supervisors on May 13th, as is noted in the document and attached here too when we recorded into the minutes.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Curry. And with that, I would ask that everyone stand before the flag of allegiance, please. At flag of allegiance, to the flag, have you had in your...
To the republic, which stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If everybody could speak, please. The first items of the discussion we need to review agenda, I would ask that we could take a moment and review it as we did at the last meeting. We have had some discussions. There were a few items that we probably need to strike from the meeting as a result of only being able to discuss COVID-19 related items. And just to that end, I would say, Mr. Curry, I think, I believe we need to strike item J1, your performance review, and that you are agreement with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, I am.
Very good. Thank you. And I believe for item I1, the solid waste discussion that we are going to have, by nature of the timeline for us to address this issue, it falls under the category of something that we can address in an electronic meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. My perspective that timeliness makes it essential and your ordinance for awarding documents makes it statutorily required.
Thank you. Is Mr. Goff with us on this call as well?
Yes, ma'am.
And do you concur that everything that's on the agenda, except for Mr. Curry's performance review, is business that we should be taking up in this electronic format?
Yes, ma'am. I do concur.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. I appreciate that. Just for ease of the situation, I would make a motion that we adopt the agenda as amended to strike Agenda Item J1, but include all of the other agenda items, and that we would pick up Agenda Item J1 as soon as we reasonably can.
Before you move forward with that, you do have Dr. Karchner and Acting Superintendent Zobiak attending the meeting, and we want to entertain shifting the COVID-19 update further up in the agenda.
I don't have the full agenda on my screen currently because of the way we're moving through this on Zoom. What is that Agenda Item number, please?
All right.
It's I.
It's I2?
II.
II.
Okay. So let's move Agenda Item I2. Would it make more sense to have it before or after public comment?
I would recommend placing it between D and E. So after the public hearing and before the public comment.
Very good. Thank you. So if no one has any other issues with it, I would recommend that we move up Agenda Item I2 and place it between Items B and E, the public hearing and the public comment period. And that's my motion. Do I have a second to make those changes to the agenda adopted as amended?
Ms. Smith, Ms. Donahue, I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue. For clarity, when we take votes in this format, we do all of our votes by roll call format. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to Item C1, this home report, which is attached to the agenda. And I believe, unless there's any COVID-related information, that we should probably just consider that an informational add-on?
Yes, and I invited Dr. Brinsley to speak if she had something to say during public comment.
Very good. Thank you, Gary. That takes us to Item D1, public hearing for the fiscal year 2020 amended budget. Mr. Curry, if you would be so kind as to keep that up for us?
Yes, ma'am. As the Board is aware, and we've done already once this fiscal year and in previous years, the Code of Virginia Section 15.22507 requires the Board to advertise and hold a public hearing if supplemental appropriations cumulatively exceed 1% of your adopted budget. The current budget is $39 million, and therefore 1% is $390,002.31. Supplemental appropriations that have been made up through the May meeting since the last public hearing that was held in February total $371,667.91. Many of these dollars come along with outside revenue to match those expenses, so it's not all new local expense. We have additional supplemental appropriations required at this time, which are listed in the table within Board Docs that I'm showing on the screen. And you can see that they include additional funding for the Children's Services Act, which we discussed would likely be necessary when the Board last met and amended the CSA budget. That funding is coming from additional state funding, refunded expenses from CSA expenditures earlier in the year, and then a local portion covered by budgeted funds from the regional jail budget line that are not needed this year. In addition to that, there are some school accounting changes. Through the year, the schools receive donations and increased grants, and then true-up their actual state and federal revenue based on the actual number of children in school. There's a memo attached to that end. That totals $41,116.33 of additional revenue with offsetting expenses. So these are not new local tax dollar-supported expenses, but updates from revenue that they've already received but need to be incorporated into the budget as we move towards the audit. And lastly, as the Boards are aware, and we discussed at the last meeting, the county is receiving today $643,000 in CARES Act funding. I'm showing in this supplemental appropriation in public hearing $150,000 appropriation to the school board for use for COVID-19 expenditures, for which they have approximately $150,000 of expenditures so far, and $200,000 for the Board of Supervisors, recognizing that the Board will very likely not spend that much in fiscal year 2020 that ends in about a month. But it's just a placeholder to allow the Board to allocate funding during June if needed. Whatever is not spent out of that allocation will revert to the fund balance and be available in FY 2021, and the Board will make that appropriation sometime in July or after. The details of this budget are all attached in the supplemental appropriation forms, as well as the detailed budget that includes every line in the budget. If the Board, after hearing from the public, is interested in moving forward with this, there is an amended budget adoption resolution and an amended budget appropriation resolution for the Board's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Do any of the other Board members have any questions before we go into the public hearing?
No.
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue, Mr. Whitson, are you okay?
This is Kira Whitson, representing the Hampton District. My only question, Mr. Curry, is the numbers you picked on the CARES Act funding, just as a placeholder for the fiscal year that's about to end, were those ballpark based on any consideration of anticipated expenditures that we might want to cover, or are those really just placeholder amounts?
The schools' amount is linked to the letter that I received from Dr. Brinsley after having conversations with her. It is linked to the approximate expenditure amount that the schools have seen in FY 2020. So that is a one-for-one. The Board amount is simply just a bucket, if you will, of CARES dollars inserted into the FY 2020 budget, and it's an opportunity for the Board to use them over this month and well exceeds any likely use that the Board will make, but I wanted to overestimate rather than underestimate.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Ms. Donahue, did you have any questions?
The only question I have is, Mr. Curry, I'm assuming that the CARES funds money will be set in a separate line item that's easily trackable where the funds are used?
Ms. Nick, Treasurer, and I are strategizing on how best to track all of these funds throughout the life. Within the schools, it's a single line item for us, but the schools will have to provide evidence back to the county for auditing purposes. And I know that through their letter, they're already working to that end. And there are some methods in our accounting software that we can use on the county side to flag expenditures indicating that they're CARES-related, and we'll be pursuing that. As well as looking back in time, as we've noted expenditures that would likely be reimbursable, but we haven't so far, we can take credit for those expenses we've already incurred.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. With that, I would declare the public hearing open on fiscal year 2020 amended budget. We follow similar rules to our in-person meetings on this electronic platform. I ask that you identify yourselves by name and the district in which you reside, and I ask that you keep your comments to under five minutes and address them to the full Board, please, to participate in the electronic format. First of all, Mr. Curry, did we receive any written letters or emails or phone messages regarding this agenda item?
Not regarding this public hearing, no.
Thank you very much. So anyone wishing to speak via the electronic platform, Zoom, in the upper right-hand corner of your screen, there are three dots, and it says "more." And if you click on that, there is a drop-down menu that allows you to raise your hand. If you wish to raise your hand to public to comment on this public hearing agenda item, please do so, and you will be recognized by Mr. Curry and the Chair, and your mic will be made live, so you may participate in the meeting. This comment period is specifically for the public hearing regarding the budget. There will be an additional public comment period after this. And with this, the public hearing is open.
Yes, so let me also note that, did a little research in Zoom, and those individuals participating by telephone should be able to press star nine to raise their hand if they're so inclined.
Oh, that's great. Thank you, Mr. Curry. So if you'd like to participate in the public hearing, please press star nine on your telephone app, or use the more option in the upper right-hand corner of your screen to raise your hand, and you'll be identified, and your mic will be patched in. I don't see any hands being raised. Mr. Curry, do you see anything?
No, I do not.
Okay. Thank you. One more try. And with that, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Do I have any motions in regard to this agenda item that we could move forward for the purposes of discussion?
As I noted before, there are two resolutions.
No, ma'am.
One to approve the amended budget, and the other for appropriation. The budget should happen first.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Curry. Yes, Mr. Whitson?
No. Mr. Curry answered my question. I wanted to make sure that we're clear on the order of the two resolutions, because one relates to the other.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone wishing to make a motion in regards to the patched material within the agenda?
This is Kira Whitson. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the resolution amending the fiscal year budget for the period July 1, 2019, and ending June 30 as presented now during this electronic meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Do I have a second, please?
This is Ms. Donahue. I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Roll call vote. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Thank you. And I also. All right. And then regarding the appropriation, I just attached to the agenda in the packet. Do I have a motion, please?
This is Kira Whitson, representing Minister Goff. Make a motion that we adopt this resolution appropriating funds related to the budget amendments just presented for the amended fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020. Again, this is the appropriation resolution as presented during the electronic meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. As for purposes of just moving the meeting along, I'll second your motion. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you. That should take us to the next agenda item. I believe we have moved up the COVID-19 update to this position on the agenda. Because we have some disciplines patched through that I would like to allow them to speak first, since they are being so kind to join us, Dr. Karchner from Rapidian Hills District and Acting Superintendent Kevin Zobiak from the Shenandoah National Park. Mr. Curry, did you have any particular format in mind?
No, I've unmuted the line for Dr. Karchner and Superintendent Zobiak, and so I'll leave it to you on organizing their, what order they go in.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Zobiak will be a little bit quicker. Acting Superintendent Zobiak, Kevin, are you there?
I am there. Can you hear me?
I can. And I think everybody probably can. And I was wondering if you could provide us an update on the activities in the park and what we can expect in the next week or so to come?
Would be happy to. First off, I'd like to step up to the fact that my detail will be coming to an end come June 18. I think Superintendent Louis Rogers from New York will be active in the public for two or four months. And we can tell our Superintendent that the official long-term supervision will be arriving at the park. When that date is announced, my boss is currently reviewing applicants. As far as park operations in response to COVID-19, all employees are currently back to work. We are encouraging telework as much as possible, and the park needs to have correctional safety plans, both the park line safety plan to move forward with daily asks to ensure the safety of all of the residents. Skyline Drive and the bathrooms along Skyline Drive are open from 5:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night. That's from sunrise to sunset. Trailheads along Skyline Drive are open this long. That country is open, except for Old Rag and Wyde Oak. Those areas continue to be closed because of the epidemic gathering in the Hillland. Hinge points at Old Rag, along Old Rag, and the very popular water pools, Falls along Wyde Oak promote people in these larger areas. We felt it is important to keep those closed. We haven't seen a whole lot of problems. We did the first weekend at Boundary Trailheads, a lot of Wyde Oak and Old Rag in Madison County, there's nothing. We need to employ some staff after this last week to turn around. People think areas are open and traffic there at all times. Several have walked past, several signs saying that the trailhead pair is closed. We're still seeing problems. We are staffing those areas and we need to. We have seen some overcrowding, not saying that it's overcrowding along the trail, but definitely some lockers, like I mentioned, along the trailheads and along Skyline Drive, including our common and some of the falls. People are just parked in the grass along the trail, along Skyline Drive. There's just a lot. They're very popular, they're seeing trailheads. We're definitely seeing that. That's, and there could be some overcrowding at this point. We just, that's actually true for now. We continue to monitor that. Our path, we would, again, make sure that we are in line with Virginia, Virginia's plan for Fort Virginia to increase access to the state public areas. Again, our concern is trying to align our assets among the state and our local. We continue to receive guidance on new uses from CDC and the National Parks Service with adjustments weekly. However, we feel pretty confident that our pace to move forward, Virginia Governor said we could move in the face to as early as June 5. Probably we won't be there until at least June. What that looks like, the park will be open for 24 hours. It will be the backcountry training at that time. Picknick rounds, maybe a vendor evaluating how we're going to manage the crowds there, though there is. But if the other people are more, I don't see a problem with picking rounds. Old Rag, Wyde Oak, and Sea Run will open, again, if gatherings are allowed. Boundary Trailheads will open only after concurrence, which we feel like is necessary to open Rapid County Boundary Trailheads without concurrence from the Board of Supervisors and the County Commissioner. Visitor Centers and this sort of local work will be closed. We have, we will be instituted all the program. Going into visitors, we will call. We did, somewhere north, they're hoping the metal will be signed this last week. It will be successful. They're planning the opening more areas based to be able to discuss that with the leadership team tomorrow, and if approved, those dates will be announced soon thereafter. So that's our path with the Board. And some of the things I'd like to know from the Board at this time is, would you be able to support this things too? And what are your concerns? Do you have continued concerns opening up boundary access with the new camp?
Thank you, Mr. Zobiak. So it sounds like we're looking at a phase two in the next seven to 10 days. And I'll just, as we comment on everything in this format, go around the table to hear from my peers, any concerns that they may have, or points for discussion. Just to start at the other end, Mr. Parrish, did you have any items for this that you wanted to discuss?
Well, first of all, I'm, thank you, Ms. Smith. First of all, I'm fine with going into phase two. And secondly, I would like to see the access to the trails to the park be open within the county so that people can get back to hiking. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Whitson?
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to just ask a couple questions. First of all, as far as the, what you discussed about the gravel opening, about everything on the Skyline Drive and related facilities, I certainly fully support that because I think it has the effect of taking some visitor pressure off of our locality. The second thing is, as Mr. Parrish just said, I too would support opening Boundary Trailhead Access, except I would only, and Smith, I'll let you weigh in on this, because these are in your district, but with Old Rag and Wyde Oak Canyon closed, for the time being, if we open Little Devil Stairs at the terminus of Kaiser Run Road, and if we open the North Fork of the Thorn at the terminus of Hall School Road, I'm afraid both of those roads are going to be slammed with visitors like we saw back in mid to late March, because people basically are going from Old Rag to Wyde Oak down their list of favorite hikes, and Little Devil Stairs comes up next. So my suggestion would be, we've got 12 of the trailheads in Rappahanna County, could we open 10 and keep closed until Wyde Oak and Old Rag are open? Little Devil Stairs, and then also the North Fork of the Thorn. That's just one suggestion, but I agree with Mr. Parrish that it's time to get back to the outdoors if we can. And it sounds like you all are prepared to keep in place the protocol that will protect everyone's health and safety. We appreciate that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to, if phase two is in line with the governor's call, up to 50 guys and 50 people, we would open Old Rag. If we do that, you guys... If we do that, you guys are hearing that, we wish that we could open up Little Devil Stairs and North Fork. And if we don't open Wyde Oak and Old Rag, we will not open the trailhead.
Yeah, I think that's sensible, yeah.
And have you spoken to the Madison County Board Supervisors about this?
Well, my plan is to call Paul County Municipalities tomorrow.
Okay.
And why don't you hear from that, we found that those areas would have been open, just to relieve pressure from that, those railways.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Did you have anything else, Mr. Whitson?
No, that's it, I appreciate it, I really do. And good luck on your next details, sir.
I'll be reverting back to the Debbie speaking.
Oh, okay, good luck on returning your performance this evening. You certainly timed your details very well, I would say.
I think I got a lot of good experiences.
Yeah, you did, yeah. Thanks a lot, we appreciate it for getting to know you.
Ms. Donahue?
I would agree with getting life back to normal on the outside. I think it has been obvious over the weekend that people want to get out into the same time. And Dr. Kirschner can help with this, but from everything I understand, you really have to be speaking with someone for five to 10 minutes consistently for the virus to get enough into you for you to catch it. So I don't worry so much about cars being parked close to each other, because unless people are standing around facing each other talking, and they're not in each other's families, like normally I think people ride together, we'll be family members, I'm not as concerned about the virus transmitting and that. So I appreciate the Park Service working with us so closely, but I'm ready to get our parks open as well.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Frazier?
Thank you, Chairman. I had a constituent, a friend who had some personal business, I took him up into the end of Kaiser Run Road yesterday afternoon, and he said there were 15 cars parked inside the parking area, Little Devil Stairs, and four outside on county type land. So it's basically open already.
Well, good behavior.
Yeah, we're trying to get rid of all the social media and passing messages, and but we need, we need a real, because people, even though it's closed, people still come, so.
Yeah, they just disregard the signage, I mean, it's effectively already open.
Yeah, they walk right down, so we, I know it's closed, but they, they're waiting, they just want to get out, you know, people are always, so. Yeah, we tried to manage it as best we could, but I apologize for these short lines.
That's all I had, I just wanted to let the board know that it's already happening without any official act.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier? And I think we all sort of anticipated that at some point, you know, this had more of a deterrent element than an enforcement element. So as the weather gets nicer, it is more and more difficult to deter that behavior. So I think that certainly yesterday was probably the perfect example of that. I didn't have any questions as long as we are moving forward in concert with Phase 2, and also with the board of Madison County and their trailheads, and taking the uniform approach, and as we've discussed in the past, also having the fees in place to somewhat decrease the crowding, and that we'll have to monitor the situation as things do open up to make sure there isn't, in particular, the parking situation over at Old Rag was what made that so untenable in Madison. So we will have to continue to monitor as things open up, and just make sure we avoid those pitfalls going forward. I didn't have any questions per se, I would just echo Mr. Whitson's comments, that I truly appreciate how open and cooperative he's been acting superintendent of the ACT, and I wish you all the best in terms of your position as deputy superintendent, and look forward to working with you in that capacity in the future.
I appreciate you guys' cooperation, and it's truly been a pleasure, and I hope to be seeing you in our work.
Thanks so much, Kevin. I think with that, we will let you go unless someone has another question, and we'll move on to have to through Dr. Kirschner.
Yes, can you hear me?
Thank you. Hello, Dr. Kirschner, how are you doing this afternoon?
Doing well, thank you.
Good, I appreciate so much you joining us this afternoon. This is Christine Smith, I'm the representative from Piedmont District and the Chair of the Board, and I was hoping that you could give us an update on the situation, both in regards to the county and the surrounding health district this afternoon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll be giving a brief that talks about, a brief that we've been giving to all of the counties and districts. And just to start off with, the data that I'm going to be giving is, the data adds up today, so it doesn't really get any pressure in this. Number of people tested in Virginia is 322,568, with 45, a little over 45,000 cases, 4,694 hospitalizations, and 1,092 deaths. In the district, we have a total of 1,196 cases. 713 of those are in Culpeper, 323 in Focatier, 41 in Madison, 106 in Orange, and 13 in Rapid Hackett County. In the district, 80 hospitalizations and 14 deaths. What I would like to briefly talk about is that hospitalization number, that reflects the patient status at the time we open the investigation, and we know that this underrepresents the true number of hospitalizations, and we try and go back and update patient records when we can, but that doesn't always happen. The upside of this is though that we do have case level data, in other words, we have all the demographics such as age and gender on the hospitalizations. The Virginia Hospital Association also tracks data for hospitalizations, and their data provides a better picture of people hospitalized, because they're actually counting folks hospitalized as they go in and as they leave. And that's very helpful for them for surge capacity calculations, but they often lack the patient level demographic data that we do. So we incorporate both of those, but the one that you see on the VDH website is the one coming from VDH and not the Virginia Hospital Association. We have, we have tested, the latest number of total tests in the county is 7,146. That's getting close to about 4% of the, not the county, the district, about 4% of the district population has been tested now. Also talking a little bit about contact tracing, people often want to know what a close contact is. This, when our contact tracers are investigating a case, they're finding out those people that have been around there. And this is a person living in the same household, and the sick person with COVID-19, it could be someone caring for a sick person, and it could be someone who's been within six feet of a sick person with COVID-19 for 15 minutes, or if you've been in direct contact with secretions from a sick person, in other words, you know you were coughed on, or sneezed on, or kissed, or shared utensils with, et cetera. So those are close contacts. So when we find a case, we investigate the case, and we interview them about their close contacts, and those are the folks that we're looking for. Another question that often comes up is when patients may discontinue home isolation. In other words, if you're a case, when can you be out of isolation? And there are three criteria. You have to be at least 10 days out from the onset of your symptoms. You have to have no fever for 72 hours, and that means without the use of fever reducing medicines such as Tamiflu or Anamprofen. And you have to have improvement in your symptoms. The symptoms don't have to go away, but you have to be getting better. If you meet all three of those, then you're out of isolation. Another thing that we have been working on in this area is that right now, approximately half of our health district is working on the contact tracing chase investigation team. Very labor intensive program that we have right now. And what the state has been working on is finding contract tracing teams for us, and they've been hiring folks to do that, but they're trickling at a very, very, very slow rate. So what we have done, partnering with the PAF Foundation and the Culpeper Wellness Foundation, to plot more charitable foundation, along with Lord Fairfax Community College, as well as Georgia Mason University, what we've done is we have linked up with those nursing programs, or those colleges and universities, and they have just, starting today, we are using those nursing students as contact tracers to help, to augment what our district is doing. And once the VDH contractors come on board, we will be able to transition our staff away from that, because we anticipate within the next month that we will be going back to more normal operations in the Health Department as Phase 2 rolls out, et cetera. And so this just started today, we had our first group of students go to Lord Fairfax in Warrenton and get trained, and so they are starting to do the contact tracing to take the burden and some stress off of our staff. The students get credit for this, course credit at the clinical hour, as well as public health exposure, and hopefully in the future they may want to work in the Public Health Department. People often ask about vaccine, as everyone has read in the news, developing within, the hopes are within the end of the year, or a year and a half, we will have a vaccine. What people need to realize is that doing that requires skipping steps. The usual length of time to develop the vaccine, from research and development to actual production and delivery, is between 15 to 20 years. And so to do this within a year and a half, a lot of the steps are accelerated, and they may not look as hard at safety and efficacy, so we need to understand that. It may not be as effective or as safe as we would like it to be. And so everyone needs to have that in the forefront of their minds when they see that a vaccine is being developed quickly. And if we roll out a vaccine to tens of thousands, or even millions of people, the first group will be healthcare workers, first responders, and any other essential personnel. And so people need to realize that as well, if the vaccine is available, it may not roll out to everybody all at the same time. We faced this in H181 in 2009 when the vaccine came out, there was a different profile for those who were affected, so it was really designed to go to not the elderly, but the young at that time, as well as healthcare workers, et cetera. So we are probably going to be going down that same road again, and a new tree item who gets the first vaccine. There's also some discussions about testing, whether you have a PCR test, whether you do serology or antibody testing. And really, the PCR test is the way we find and call somebody a confirmed case. Serology testing is good to look back in the rearview mirror to see if you've had COVID-19 in the recent past, but we encourage our healthcare providers, our physicians, to not order within seven days of onset of disease, because those people may not have developed antibodies yet. We prefer at least 14 days after they started their symptoms. And there's been some recent discussions and information put out by the CDC, talking about this virus and the environment. It's more stable on plastic and stainless steel than it would be on copper or cardboard. You can still detect virus up to 72 hours after you apply it in the laboratory to plastic and stainless steel, but really the median half-life on those materials is more in the realm of hours, five or six hours on those. And also, remember that when you identify an organism, an organism on the surface doesn't mean it's infectious. Oftentimes, the virus will dematerialize very rapidly in the environment, and really the RNA is left behind, and that's when the PCR picks up. And so you may detect it in the environment, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's there as a live virus. Also, the CDC recently put out some information regarding the fact that most of the spread is person to person, picking up a COVID-19 illness from the environment, from touching a surface, is a much less likely means of transmission than respiratory droplets going from one person to another. And that was something that was very helpful to note for everybody. And just in closing, the public health messages, though they're not sexy, though they're simple, they're still the same. We really encourage folks to wash your hands off and maintain six feet of physical distance, cover those coughs and sneezes, and really, if you have coughs and sneezes, you need to be at home, certainly not going to work. Clean and disinfect surfaces as we've always maintained, and again, folks need to stay home when they're sick and not go to work when they're sick, because that's what we're really saying, a lot of the transmission. So with that, I'll entertain any questions, anyone might have?
Thank you very much, Dr. Kirschner, and thank you for always being so open and informative to this board. I know, you know, we receive regular updates from you, that have been very informative and really stayed ahead of getting information out to us, and then we in turn pass it on or talk to people with what we've learned from you. And I do very appreciate it. I didn't know that about the nursing students, that they were being trained to be call tracers or contact tracers, so that was very interesting, and thank you for letting us know about that program. I'll just call around the table to see if anyone has any additional follow-up questions. Mr. Frazier?
Please, attempting to unmute.
Looks like Debbie's unmuted, so Ms. Donahue?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Smith and Dr. Kirschner. I have a couple of questions. With regards to the vaccine, from what I've read and heard, it's going to be similar most likely to a flu vaccine, so you don't necessarily know that the strain is going to be covered in that vaccine, but you're, you know, kind of a gamble if you can get the vaccine, that it may help you or may not.
There are at least three different modalities or delivery systems, and one will be similar to the flu vaccine production and manufacturing, and even the science behind it, but there are two other different ways of approaching it that will be completely different, and some of, one of those has not ever been used before in vaccine production. So it's really going to be all over the board, and it will really depend on the studies moving forward as to which one, two, or three, or even more vaccines will be the ones that are used. So I think it's a little early to say whether that's going to be the case or not. So I think it's a little early to say whether that's going to be the case or not.
Okay, I just want to make sure we set expectations with the citizens in the county, so not everybody's thinking of immediate cure. With concerns about the hikers and the biking groups that tend to show up in large numbers and park together and then either go hiking or go into a store or something like that, do you have any concerns with the amount of time that folks are, you know, getting out of their car and getting started on a hike or passing each other on a trail or anything in the brief?
I think the transmission is going to be minimal in those situations, getting out of the car and getting on the trail ahead, and certainly passing each other on the trail. I wouldn't think those would be the big issues. I think as they go into a business in large groups, I think they need to continue to police, have whatever the requirements or the recommendations are. At that point in time, they need to insist that those be followed, you know. But in other words, if it says no more than 10 people, I think people need to, business owners need to be able to tell those folks, you need to stay outside until people leave and take a break.
All right, just two more. When does the flu normally show back up in the fall?
We start recommending flu vaccine in September, and then we start seeing rises in flu numbers October, November, and really getting hard December, January, February.
And then the last thing, if we go back to in the near future meetings inside, I'm wondering, the decision about wearing masks in brick and mortar makes it a little difficult to have a meeting in my mind if people are speaking behind masks, especially if people are listening in. Do you have any input on that?
I agree. I think it will be more difficult, and I don't know what Phase II is going to look like, be the being masked, but I'm with you. I think it will be a little problematic in the communication piece.
Okay, thank you so very much.
You bet.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Whitson?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I just had two questions. One more macro and then one along the lines of what Ms. Donahue just asked. My more macro question relates to what seems like a pretty active infection rate in nearby Culpeper County, and I wonder if you could just comment on that and to what extent that might or might not have any adverse effect on our currently modest numbers of infected people in Rappahannock County. And then this, my second question relates to everyone's favorite topic for the last couple of weeks, at least here, as to whether we should reconvene public in-person meetings of various public bodies, including our own, of course supervisors. And you and Ms. Donahue just had an interesting exchange about the practical aspect of doing that, everyone's wearing masks. I guess my question to dovetail with her inquiry is, is it a good idea to put potentially 50 people in an old building on Courthouse Road in Washington, Virginia for a meeting that could last two or three hours? Some of those are my two questions.
Yeah, to answer the second one first, I agree. I don't necessarily think it would be a good idea to do that. And I don't profess to know the meeting regulations and what they are in normal times. But you're right, I think there needs to be some common sense and to think whether that makes sense or not, particularly if you're not going to mask anybody. So certainly some things to think about. As far as Culpeper, um, thank you. You bet. The main driver of Culpeper was, is, even though we're seeing, I think they've hit their peak, the main driver of that was the, regrettably, was the Hispanic community. And we have now, we've now seen a peak and it is now diminishing. So I think that's going to be less and less of an issue. And the reason is, and we've put this out on social media and other forums, is that the same issues that lead folks to have to live together in dense populations, whether that's poverty or whether that's being afraid of being, running up against the ice or the immigrant authorities, a lot of folks in that demographic live together, they live in multi-generational families, and they work in jobs that don't allow them to telework. They also are hard, typically hard workers, and if you tell them to stay home when they're sick, they won't, they'll continue to work. And so it's been very, it's been a very, very difficult and challenging public health messaging to do this. And we have turned the corner, and we've seen a lot less of those cases pop up in the last two weeks. We were, or Culpeper was the driver behind our health district having the largest percentage of cases being Hispanic or Latino. We have now dropped, we're no longer number one in that, which is good, and we're drifting towards number three. And I think that's more a case of just we're, we've finally, we've finally turned that corner. So I think overall, and when I put out my, my data, my chart email at the end of the week, I think we'll see that the numbers in the district in Culpeper in particular will be continuing to drift down. So we've seen really, really good news from the data standpoint.
Thanks a lot. You've been very thoughtful in throwing in your analysis. Importantly, you've done a great job distilling it for certainly people like me who are not smart on the science or the public health aspect of all of this. So thank you, thank you for us giving us really good, digestible information. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. I did have a quick question for you, Dr. Karchner. It was good to learn about the hospitalization number being cumulative as well. I wasn't aware that that was the case. But when we're looking at, say, the total number within the county, as it stands now is at 13, and of course, we can't know all of the details that are associated with every case that would be a HIPAA violation, but I think we sensibly can look back in time to sort of deduce how many actual active infections we have in the county at a given time. So if we do that, is it safe to look back? Would you say is it more than two weeks or three weeks we should look back to do the math and think about what we actually have going on in the county?
Yeah, I think you can, a typical illness is going to last about two, three weeks. And knowing that you have X number of cases and when they came along over the last two and a half months, I think it's very easy to deduce that you have one hospitalization and that everybody else, as you looked two, three weeks ago, if anyone fits into that category, they're, they're over.
Right, I think I looked at the 15th the other day, which would be a little more than two weeks at this point, and that we were at 11 then. So, I mean, we could logically deduce that probably 11 have recuperated, we probably have one active case and one hospitalization. But is that definitely the way we should kind of frame these numbers?
I think that's a good way to look at it, at least in the general sense. And the thing about the hospitalizations, as I've said before, when we open the case and they're hospitalized, they're noted as hospitalized, but we don't always go back and, and, well, like I said, the hospitalizations are cumulative, and so we don't take them off the list when they're no longer hospitalized, and so.
But if they're not hospitalized when they're diagnosed and they become hospitalized, then they're added to the count, correct?
Most of the time.
That's okay.
Most of the time they are, yeah.
Well, that's a fair statement. You've got a lot going on.
Yeah.
So that's the only question that I had, was just kind of how to frame these cumulative numbers. I know I passed you by earlier due to a technical issue, Mr. Frazier, please, if you have any questions.
Actually, you just asked my question, how can we come up with a simple formula to determine how many people are actually sick at any given time? And there doesn't seem to be a real number out there, we just have to do the math ourselves.
Yes, because following, and I put this out very early on in my messaging, is that the notion of a recovered count is really, from our standpoint, we're counting acute cases, hospitalizations. We're not tracking people down to ask them how they're doing three weeks later or two weeks later. We just don't have the manpower to do that, nor does really anybody else. And so most of the recovery statistics that you see out there are going to be, for the lack of a better word, very rough estimates based on what you've got, just what we've got. We had so many numbers two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and we've got this many more since then, so we can assume that those all recovered, you know, minus the hospitalizations that were noticed at the time. Though the majority of hospitalizations we found in our district are eventually going on too.
Do you have an average, is there, is there any such thing as an average number of days that somebody would be hospitalized or is that a case-by-case basis? Does that make any sense, my question?
Dr. Karchner, are you there?
His phone line is still active, but he may have had to jump away.
I know, I do know he is very busy, so, oh, there he is.
I didn't.
Would you mind repeating your question, please, Mr. Frazier?
Yes, my question was, is, is going to be asked, so I thought maybe I would ask it, is there an average number of days that a patient would be in the hospital? Is that a case-by-case, you know, the condition of the host patient type of situation? I think we lost him again.
I think you're right.
Yeah, the statistics show that, yeah, the average hospitalization length of stay is about two weeks, but people are, people are in the hospital a long time.
Thank you, Dr. Karchner. And did you have any other questions, Mr. Frazier?
No, no, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Karchner.
Does anyone have any additional follow-up questions?
Well, yeah, this, Ms. Parrish, I, I know it's one thing to deduce that we have 13 cases and many of those are cured, that you deduces the number, or we don't know, are there number of cases that are out there that haven't been tested yet or that are coming forward? And so it's pretty hard to say, are we going to, you know, level off or are we going to, we'll, you know, in the next couple of weeks, no, there's no prediction in a way. I simply repeat on that, this is a thought, a thought on the subject.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. And just so everyone knows, at one point a few weeks ago, when we started to see an uptick in Culpeper, we did as a board talk to Dr. Karchner via email about whether it made sense to implement additional testing facilities here in Rappahannock County. Would you mind just recapping for everyone briefly your response to us, Dr. Karchner? I think we may have some technical difficulties, but basically, and please correct me if I'm misremembering anything, Mr. Curry, the response was that due to the urgent needs in other places.
First of all, one, one thing to keep in mind is that, and this plays into the response
Well, we seem to be having some issues with lifetime here on that connection. There you go, Dr. Karchner, if you're able to.
Yeah, basically because of the urgent need that we had in Culpeper at the time, we had a lot of resources devoted to that. But what people also need to realize is that the Health Department doesn't do the testing. We typically encourage and work with providers and organizations to do testing. And just like I said, half of our, half of our health district is wrapped up in contact tracing and case investigation as well as all the other things supporting that. And the biggest thing to realize is that even if you were going into Culpeper, instead of doing that and having a testing site, anywhere where you congregate with folks that are going to testing, you're going to be increasing the risk of contracting or being exposed to disease at any testing site, no matter where it is. And so whether it's Culpeper or Culpeper in Sperryville, you would still run the same risk of being exposed to people because you're going to a place where people more likely than not have, have illness. So that was the main discussion.
Very good, thank you, Dr. Karchner. And unless anyone else has any other questions, I think we'll let you go, and thank you so much for joining us again today.
You bet. My pleasure.
Thank you. Anybody? Oh, there you go. So that brings us back to the, our agenda. We can get back to the agenda, Mr. Curry, please.
Yes, and I did have a short written report from Mr. Williams, if you'd like me to read that for the benefit of.
Oh, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Yes, he writes that as of May 29, Rappahannock County has 13 cases, and we've talked about that. And per the Health Department, of, out of those 13, about seven to eight have met the 14-day quarantine. The county is meeting fire and rescue departments, demand for PPE as requested, and Kevin is coordinating weekly requests. No volunteers of our companies as of May 29 have tested positive for COVID-19. However, one provider did self-isolate, waiting for test results that proved negative. The local offices of emergency management are now responsible for providing PPE to the courts as they begin to reopen. Mr. Williams has been on the non-COVID-related item, working on the programming requirements for public safety radios as we move towards cutover. And he's been providing PPE to all the county offices, library, sheriff's office on a weekly basis to make sure they have what they need, and participating in conference calls with VDM Region 2, VDM Eastern Regions, the Health Department, and Department of Fire programs. That's what he reported.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. So it doesn't sound like he has any urgent concerns or needs to meet at this time?
No, I meant needs.
Very good, thank you very much. I'll just want to give everyone else a chance to comment again if they have any questions on Mr. Williams' report. Mr. Frazier? Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
No, thank you.
Mr. Whitson?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish?
No, I'm not.
Thank you, and I appreciate very much Mr. Williams for reaching us out of that report as well. But within this agenda item, we have a few things to talk about.
Yes, so that is related to the CARES Act funding, it's the Secretary of Finance memorandum that I've attached to the agenda. It includes the guidelines that have been passed along from the federal government on how allowable uses of that funding. My goal in general is trying to think, how do we get from here to December 30, 2020, which is the deadline to use the funds? With a good plan and distribution of that investment would be for the board to begin thinking about those uses at this meeting, allowing staff to then use the month of June to really dig into options and develop options and programs with whoever we may need to interface with, and then bring back to the board at the July meeting some of those options, and possibly before then, if needed, you could hold an additional meeting, so that heading into fiscal year 2021, the board can roll out some of these programs, whatever the board desires to do, beyond the allocation to the schools that you did earlier through the budget amendment. But there are several large category options, and I've identified some of those in bullet form. And you can see also, I've attached a letter from businesses of Rappahannock, which is starting, that was actually attached today. I've had several conversations with Teresa Wood on how these funds might be able to be invested in an appropriate way. One being investing in an advertising campaign that we're back open sort of message, and try to get the patrons back at our restaurants when the time is right, and lodging locations. And the other is a direct-to-business, business support type program. A lot of effort would have to go into sorting out exactly what those would look like, but those are the two big categories. For the county, we have pretty limited expenses for PPE and overtime, and we need to continue to explore all avenues of what is allowable. But generally, the funds must go towards something that is directly related to COVID-19. And there, every locality in the state and would gather the country, trying to find a way to invest these for that near-short-term goal, but also in a way that meets multiple objectives. So, it might be a short-term COVID goal, but it also meets a long-term, a long-established county requirement or city requirement. So, that's my goal for this CARES funding. It is $643,000, of which a small, quote-unquote, equitable share needs to be provided to the town of Washington. And it's a considerable investment. Ms. Wood and I have suggested that it would be great if we could get this into the community in a way that allows it to multiply through the different vendors that we have, and we get a little more bang for the buck, rather than on methods that send the funds out of camera.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I know we've been talking about this for the last few weeks, this CARES funding materializing, and wanted to give everyone a chance to formulate their thoughts, or, you know, their thoughts on what might be appropriate priorities, how much to spend this funding. Mr. Frazier?
Oh, I can see maybe putting some money in, like tourism, advertising, but to give direct payments to businesses, because we feel that they've been affected by all these shutdowns related to COVID, I mean, that just doesn't seem right, because there would be a lot of businesspeople that have lost revenue that we can't actually say that aren't tourism-related. So, I don't think that would be a very fair way to, or equitable way to disperse any monies, to remit payment to businesses.
And let me say that while many tourism-related businesses have been impacted, many other businesses have also been impacted by stay-at-home orders, or layoffs, or...
And that's exactly my point, so thank you for making it a little bit clearer.
But those other businesses would also be eligible for a business incentive because they are related, the impact of the business is related to COVID-19.
Then $650,000 isn't going to go very far.
Correct.
If that's all you have, thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Yeah, that's it for now.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Donahue.
To continue along that line of thought, I do know that Rappahannock community was able to distribute through kind of a grant process, $1,000 per business that applied and was accepted, which I'm pretty positive everybody accepted. I don't remember the total number, I think it was around 89 businesses, Mr. Curry, I don't know if you can correct me, that received that feedback. What I've heard from the people doing that work has been that those businesses were extremely appreciative, and it did make a huge difference. So, although there's a lot of businesses in the county, to some of us, $1,000 may seem small, but even that little bit of money can go a long way, depending on the business. So, I wouldn't want to discount it, just because there's a lot of businesses that need help.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, did you have anything else to add?
With regards to the idea that businesses of Rappahannock is thinking that the community attend, I think, you know, maybe part of that could be eligible because of the high school, or the students that are graduating that didn't get to walk across the stage in front of friends and family, and also the recognition of our first responders and the heroes of this event. I think if we could look into that to see the legality and make sure those funds would be allowed to be used for that, I would be willing to have that conversation as well.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, Mr. Whitson?
Well, I'm going to get, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks, I'm testing on your new headphones today. I'm going to get down and dirty here a little bit. First of all, I want to thank Teresa Wood and Mr. Curry and you, Ms. Smith, for the idea of placing porta-potties in key areas around the county to take visitor pressure off of our businesses and keep those indoor restroom facilities sanitary. And so, I guess, the first thing I'm thinking about, and this has been an ongoing issue for years, including the town of Washington, is to what extent, in the name of preservation of public health, might we be able to invest in permanent visitor-oriented restroom facilities in the town and in our villages? And I just put that out, there is an idea, because I really think you all hit on something with this porta-potty idea that I believe went in, was implemented beginning this morning with porta-potties, I think, in Qmart, and then Headmasters, and maybe in Flint Hill, and at the Visitor Center. So, let's all think about if there might be a public health hook that would allow us to put some money into those types of, kinds of facilities on a permanent basis, just one thought. And then, a comment, and this really goes in the opposite direction of contemplating, how do we spend the money we're getting, but rather, how do we get additional money? And this might be a question for Mr. Curry to settle later outside this meeting, but I understand from correspondence earlier today that the paid temporary EMS folks in Ms. Donahue's district at Chester Gap have been running a number of calls in Warren County, and my question, and an administrative and financial one, is to what extent, if those expenses incurred at Chester Gap are reimbursable under this CARES Act funding, might we be able to call on Warren County to punt some of their own funds back to us to cover their proportion of those expenses incurred, so that we're not using all of our, an unfair portion of our CARES Act money to cover expenses that were incurred in Warren County? So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson, Mr. Parrish?
I really don't have anything extra to add, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. I would just echo that if we are able to appeal to neighboring localities to take a share of the mutual aid that we enjoy with those localities, and if there is funding to share, it would be nice to be able to be on the receiving end. And, you know, I think the priorities should be our first responders, meeting their needs, knowing that this continues to be a bit of an unpredictable situation, and we may have expenses that we need to cover in regards to fire and rescue as this continues to unwind. I know that we have a limited number of volunteers due to pre-existing conditions and, you know, personal comfort levels and age. People have rightfully bowed out of service for a while, and I respect that, and actually think it's absolutely the right thing to do, and that leaves us, you know, even fewer volunteers than we would normally have, which is why we did resort to some staffing for Chester Gap. And I do think that that may happen for other squads before this is all over, and we should be prepared to absorb that. I also think that there may be ways that we can improve our communication, looking at other counties, some of them have invested in COVID-19 dashboard, where you can pull up their website, the first thing you'll see is their numbers, announcements, and links to information regarding COVID-19 as it relates to their county, and I think that would be an effective way to communicate with folks that have internet access and cell phones. I do think we need to talk about how we are communicating with our press releases, and either have staff take on the weekly press release, or if staff has too many demands on their time, and maybe we should ask someone, pay them a little bit of money to draft a weekly press release for us, with input from administration and board. I think the communications piece is key, and in addition to the technical website presence, it may pay for us to make copies of information and give them to the nonprofit organizations that we know are talking to people and communicating with people on a regular access, or a regular basis, to use those materials for bag stuffers when they make deliveries to homes, so they can stuff in the bags to distribute through the school, the food pantry, rapid home, and organizations of that nature, so that we're meeting both ends of the spectrum, the high-tech with the website presence, and the low-tech with paper handouts. Those are my thoughts on where the funds should be spent, and I do agree that there probably is a component for businesses there. I would prefer it be a clean component, such as advertising, rather than something that might require more administration and a middleman, such as loans, or, not loans, but grants, or something of that nature. And that's my thoughts on how we should look at dispersing this $643,000. Anyone else have any additional questions or thoughts regarding how we disperse this money?
Chair Smith, this is Becky Donahue, I'm just wondering if there's a way to, legally, I guess, have some sort of thread that's out there in the FOIA world, I don't know how we could do that exactly, but try to have an ongoing conversation, so it doesn't stop today, as to where, what ideas people have.
Well, I did have a thought about a way forward as well, and my recommendation, I'm amenable to any number of ways businesses can hurt, but it seems to me like we craft a budget every year based on the feedback from our different stockholders and our shareholders in the budget. Is that a logical way to continue with this, for you to be the point that reaches out to all the folks that go over the process and see what their needs are, and punch the numbers?
Certainly, that could work. I'm not sure who all the stakeholders would be in this situation, as it would seem to be broader than the group that is normally involved in the budget, but maybe not, maybe it's the same group.
Well, I think that it's a place to start, and then I know that there is a bi-weekly non-government call, and that might be a place to sow the seed as well, and see what sort of feedback you get from that group, in terms of nonprofits and anything that may be able to give information on how to best disperse this money. But that was how I would think a way forward would be. I do think it is important that we get ahead and issue a press release on a weekly basis. I know we've had a lot of demands on staff time, but do you need a vote of the board in order to make that official, Mr. Curry, or is that something you feel like you can take on and have that call through with?
With respect to soliciting ideas and requests for ways to spend the CARES Act dollars, I don't think I need any direction from the board. With respect to weekly press releases, my goal usually is to push out information when there's new information. I don't want people to feel like they pick up a press release, it's nothing new, and then stop looking at it. That's my concern.
Thank you, I guess, and I'm of a mind that I feel like we should be furnishing information on a weekly basis, on a regular basis, and then if there's a developing story or breaking news of which people need to be aware, that we should issue a follow-up. And I would defer to my peers on the board for consensus, a way forward, and if you're happy with only issuing press releases on a sporadic basis, then I'm willing to go along with that. Mr. Parrish?
I think that if we get the information as it becomes available, is good enough.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Whitson?
I don't have anything to add, no. I mean, I think in terms of long communication, or long-term planning for communication, and there's a lot of room for improvement, we're in a situation, or in a unique position, because many people don't have reliable internet access, or something. I know, we definitely need to look at improving our communication even beyond this current crisis, and if this crisis informs us that we have an issue that has to be resolved to get information out to members of the community more effectively, I'm all for it. So, it's just a question of thinking it through, and if they're thinking it through thoroughly to figure out what we can do with the infrastructure we have and don't have, and if, out of all of this, there's a hook where we, within the parameters of the CARES Act rules, where expenditures would allow us to spend money on improving citizen communication and outreach through some electronic or other means, I'm all for it. And in the near term, if those expenditures would include some kind of public information, making our public information distributions more robust, including staff, and we can fund it from that CARES Act funding, I'd be open to that idea as well.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson, Ms. Donahue?
Thank you, Chair Smith, I'm fine with sending out communication when new information is fresh off the presses and needed to get out to the citizens of the county. I concur that communication, for our county of 7,200 people, we should be able to figure something out, whether it's more reliable, given all of the challenges we face around the month.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Frazier?
Excuse me, I concur with several of the other members, I think that we should try and get it out as we get it basis.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. All right, so I guess we'll move forward with the sporadic press releases and working through information as it comes out, and we can just continue, is there any motion or action in regards to this discussion that anyone wishes to take?
It doesn't seem necessary, I wouldn't think.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Parrish. That takes us on to the proposed emergency... That takes us on to the proposed emergency ordinance that we modified at the last meeting. I had this added to this agenda. I had several concerns, which I voiced one of them at the time. And I was hoping to attempt to propose with, would they, that we can just get clarification on a few points of concern that I had. One is that in this ordinance, the way that we adopted it in the course of meeting, where the ordinance says a public body shall not, shall not hold public meetings any earlier than the start date of Phase Two for the provided in the executive order. With that addition, I was not aware anywhere that this board has that authority. And so I was concerned about it being a Dillon Rule issue. And the other concern that I had in retrospect was that because this wording was added, that was more restrictive than what was advertised or publicized for the meeting, that we had an issue with it being possibly void advenicio or not set up to be what people were expecting based on the way that the meeting was announced. And I was just hoping that we could hear from the county attorney to see if we had any concerns along those lines.
As to, I think that the Dillon Rule question, I don't really see that issue jumping out at me. As to conformance between an ad and what was done, the advertisements don't have to be that persp, it's not a question of being more or less restrictive. It's being whether or not the public was put off notice that the issue would be discussed and decided. So.
This particular ordinance was an emergency ordinance, which was not advertised for public carrying and would only be valid for 60 days unless it's re-adopted after an advertised public carrying.
Right. And this was in the nature of this COVID emergency. So I don't see that either of those two concerns would prohibit us going forward with the way this is worded.
Thank you. So in terms of the legalities, then we don't have any concerns with the modification of this language as we did at the last meeting?
As far as the emergency ordinance?
Correct.
Section 2E in the form that it is in now before those projected changes, which would put it back to the way it was when it was originally adopted.
So this would remove the words "shall not hold" and "any earlier than the start of Phase Two" for Rappahannock County.
Right. So at the last meeting, the board added there those items that are struck through here. And so they're considering whether to revert back.
Revert back to the what?
Right. And so the question is, when they inserted the Phase Two language, any earlier than start of Phase Two, was that lawful?
Yeah, I think it was.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. And I did just, I want to let everyone know. I have, you know, done some research on this. And because I did ask for this to be added back to the agenda, and I reached out to all of our neighboring localities that I could, that I had folks there, talked to their administrators. And as a result, I knew some people from different trainings that I've been to. And I reached out to Warren County, where they have 157 cases. And they are still continuing to hold their board supervisors' meetings with a physical quorum. I reached out to Madison County, where they have 41 cases. And they are still continuing to hold their board supervisors' meetings with a physical quorum. I reached out to Page County, where they have 225 cases. And they are continuing to hold their board supervisors' meetings with a physical quorum. The localities of Orange and Culpeper have been using the Zoom platform. Their county attorney's opinion does not restrict the subject matter of the online meetings on the Zoom platform to the narrow scope which we are trying to work with. So they have been taking on work of a nature that we can't undertake on this platform. I did also check into the format that a lot of these counties are using. Many of them are using a closed-circuit TV setup where they can have people comment in one room and broadcast it into the room where the board is to facilitate that in addition to receiving great comments before the meeting. Some of them are having public in the meeting and having folks wear masks and wiping down, sanitizing the podium, the microphone after each person comes up to comment. I know that there are concerns with the courthouse and the capacity of the courthouse, which is capped at 90 people. And I think we could reasonably accommodate no more than 20 people up there with social distancing. But I have reached out to the school and we would be able to make use of the auditorium, which can seat up to 300 people. So it could be physically distanced and capped at a certain number that would be safe. And there is a large stage there, which we could make use of to socially distance ourselves and do everything that we're supposed to safely do in order to hold a meeting. So I just really feel like we need to talk about this and figure out a way to make this happen. I know that there are folks that believe that Phase Two is coming soon and that that is the reason not to do this. But we don't control when Phase Two rolls out for our locality. We neighbor a hotspot which may be caught up. Northern Virginia may delay the opening of Phase Two. And even if we do roll into Phase Two soon, we may at some point be rolled back to Phase One or Phase Zero. And so I hate the phrase "a new normal", but this is an evolving reality. And I think that we can and should figure out a way to do business, like so many other businesses have to do. And I would like to hear the thoughts on this from the other supervisors. Mr. Frazier?
I muted him, I just unmuted, or asked to unmute just now. There you go.
Am I muted?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Curry, for unmuting me. I talk to myself a lot anyway, but I don't get anything done doing that. Yeah, I, just this last planning commission meeting that we had, not, you know, with this ordinance that the board adopted at one of our last meetings, we can't have any public meetings even with a quorum. And with electronic, electronic format, it's almost impossible for the planning commission to function. I think we proved that with that meeting, if anybody listened to it. We were discussing zoning maps and you can't really do it. So, but I got to thinking, you know, our last meeting, I had constituents that wanted us to keep the moratorium against BMB and tourist homes having customers. And yet the board said that they thought that we were singling out one certain business. Well, really, I mean, everything else had been taken care of by the governor's executive orders. It was about the only thing left that we could focus on. So yes, the board did focus on one business, but the governor had focused on eight or 10. But when you look at, with Mr. Curry talking about opening up the building and zoning office for, you know, off-the-street customers, all they can do is issue by right permits. If we don't have planning commission hearings and board meetings like they do in Culpeper and Falkir and Warren County, Madison, then anyone that finds themselves a small lot owner that needs a variance or a special use permit to build a little bit closer to the lot line or to get a family apartment to take care of their aging parents or whatever, they can't do it. So we're basically, by having this moratorium against public meetings or public quorums to have a meeting, we're basically telling an entire section of the county, the small lot owners, you know, you gotta wait. So I really think it's not a good business practice. I think we can find a way to hold these meetings and they can be safe under all the social distancing and PPE guidelines that are in place.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier, Ms. Donahue.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I guess I have mixed emotions with the topic. When we voted, we had been discussing, I know there were people that were even interested in shutting down our roads because we were so scared what this virus was going to do to the county. And each week, I think we learn a bit more and have better expectations than we had ever thought. But our agreement in what we're looking at now basically said until Phase Two, I think we heard the Park Service superintendent say that he was expecting Phase Two by the 5th and he's not going to be ready to go until the 9th. From a business standpoint, I think we're expecting either this week or next week. The sense of urgency, I understand the planning commission, our committee had a really tough time and I do empathize with that. But I don't think we're going to be very easy to understand for the people listening in if we have to wear the masks. And that's something I don't know the answer to. We have enough trouble sometimes in Zoom because of the lack of connectivity. But even on a phone call, if committee members are wearing masks, you're gonna have a horrible time understanding what they're saying. And then, you know, we chose to open up or to close the BMBs or the tourist homes when the governor did not. That was totally our call. Reopening, we made that call. So I don't necessarily agree that Northern Virginia is going to dictate to us whether we're open or closed. They chose to be closed. The governor didn't tell them to stay in Phase One. So there's just so much up in the air on this that I don't think waiting another five to 10 days is going to hurt us to wait.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Whitson?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I really appreciate it. And I also appreciate that Ms. Donahue spoke before me because it'll save all of you time and it'll save me a wind. Yeah, I mean, first of all, this question to Dillon Rule, for anyone who's listening, who doesn't understand what that means, certainly Mr. Goff could articulate it better than me. I'm not, I'm not a lawyer. But I know enough that Dillon Rule basically says that you are not allowed to enact a local ordinance that is out of step with or inconsistent with state code. And here we have very much a local ordinance that we're allowed to adopt if we desire to stand it because we're in a declarative emergency. So the question, the rule, to me, is an interesting one because Ms. Donahue just pointed out, we actually amended our own continuity of government ordinance to include per-term rentals, really. So any question to Dillon Rule, I would hope would have been addressed at that time when we were basically amending our own ordinance on the fly at the request of, or at least with the public comments of a citizen in this county who asked why we hadn't shut down per-term rentals. And we went ahead and did it. And now those same individuals are asking questions about the legality of us deftly getting additional changes to our contingency or continuity of government ordinance regarding not having public meetings. Dr. Karcher, of course, has no interest in or concern with what we do administratively in this county, which is why I'm glad I asked him the question. Is it a good idea to put 50 people inside an old building on Courthouse Row? And I'm not going to speak for him because I think we all heard what he said. So in sum, I will say that I agree with Ms. Donahue. I also appreciate very much, Ms. Smith, how much legwork you did on this. I know that, I understand people are eager to get back to work. I listened to enough of the planning commission meeting the other night to understand that it did not go well. I don't know why it didn't go well. I don't know that the electronic format is the easiest thing with which to work. So maybe one more electronic mean for the planning commission will go more smoothly and will be more productive. All that said, I have no interest in blocking down the operations of county government any longer than necessary. I think we're close. It could be five days, it could be 10 days. And yet for some reason, it stretches through the end of this month. And by all means, let's have a real conversation at our July meeting. And I think, Ms. Smith, you've done an excellent job of talking, having talked with surrounding localities about some of the ways they have adapted and some of the ways that they've implemented audiovisual and other means to keep everyone safe. And so with all that research you've done, it sounds like we'll be poised and ready to go perhaps next month or maybe earlier if we stick with this language that we adopted, including you, Ms. Smith, just, I mean, here two weeks ago. So for me, nothing has changed in two weeks that would compel me to support returning to in-person meetings. But hopefully, hopefully, we'll be there soon. And I'm comfortable with the language as it's written. We said no earlier than the start date of Phase Two. And so that could be next week. And if it's not next week, the week after, the week after that, then let's talk about it at our July meeting. And I certainly appreciate everyone's perspective on this. I just think that there's no rush here and it's still a very uncertain time we find ourselves in. And thank you for that opportunity to weigh in on this.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Parrish?
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, I'm very much looking forward to going back to the regular meetings. And hopefully it's not too far off. But I am willing to go along with what the rest of Virginia does or what's recommended by the medical people and the rest of the government of Virginia. But I am not willing to take the chance that the result of my vote could possibly lead to someone's death, no matter how unlikely that could be. I'm just not willing to take that chance. So I'm sorry about that.
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Parrish. And I would just say that, just to clarify, yes, I did vote aye when we voted on this two weeks ago. I thought it was important that we allow the BMBs to open back up. And I still do think that is important. And that is why I did vote aye on this as it was amended. In retrospect, I clearly should have asked for it to have been a split motion to where we were voting on, to keep our government open as well as to keep our businesses open. So I do regret that I didn't think to make that request and have a split of the motion at that point. I have done a lot of legwork and clearly we don't have a consensus of this board today to start holding the meetings with a physical quorum. I did bring up the Dillon Rule question. It wasn't prompted by citizens. I did bring it up, although I didn't voice it quite properly before the vote last time. I think I asked a question about if we were exceeding our authority. So I was just wanting to give voice to that a little more clearly and take advantage of the presence of our county attorney to make sure we are erring on the right side in our decisions. I don't think it proves anyone to have a motion today because it does seem the consensus is to wait and move forward in lockstep with the statewide rollout to Phase Two. Do I have any other questions or emotion in regards to this agenda item?
Chair Smith, this is Kir Whitson. And I appreciate really all the legwork you did. I think it's excellent and it certainly gives me food for thought. So if we do, in this case scenario, end at the end of June, we're not back to business in some normal form, I really, I really think you've contributed a lot to moving us along and I appreciate that.
Well, I just would say to my constituents, I know, I know we have a lot to do and I'm very anxious to get back to work and eager to get back to work. And I wish I could do it more quickly than someone else's timeline.
And I think we all feel that way.
I would just leave it at that. And I think that takes us, if no one has anything else to add to the COVID-19 update, I think that takes us to our next agenda item.
At the risk of delivery, Ms., I would like to be clear of the board's intention relative to the July meeting. And it appears to me that we will very likely be in Phase Two well in advance of the July meeting. And so with that being the case, there are a couple of public hearings that are, that were not held due to limitations. And if you were back to a public meeting with the public invited to participate, then you could hold those public hearings. And one of those is the secondary six-year road plan. And the other is the Miller special exception for more than one dwelling. And Chair Smith brought up some interesting points earlier. And I'm not sure how the board would like to proceed. But one way to proceed perhaps could be to hold your business item meeting in the courthouse at 2:00 and then hold the public hearings at the, at a school facility in the evening where there's more room and more, you know, separation of people. Even though you're in Phase Two, it just reduces the risk of close contact. But I would like some direction as to whether I should be advertising these public hearings for July, assuming that we will be in Phase Two. And if I do that, I need to know where the meeting is going to be convened.
So if I could weigh in, that sounds like a reasonable approach to go ahead and advertise those and have a regular meeting in two and then have the public hearing in a larger arena where people can space out.
I agree. I'm just wondering, just kind of jumping in here, I'm sorry about that. I apologize for just jumping in. But I think with such a backlog that we may have, we may also have to keep in mind that we might want to have to continue that meeting to a later date. I don't know what to schedule, how many public hearings we might possibly have in one night.
Well, right now, the Board of Supervisors only has two. The Planning Commission have a few that you need, that they need to get through. Certainly, it would be good for the board to clear the few that you know you have before the Planning Commission's items make their way to you as well.
Right.
I do think that we should do our regular business during the day at the courthouse. And I would, I would hope that we should do our public hearings in the evening at the auditorium. We may want to do it all at the auditorium if we have an increase in numbers. That may make the most sense. And if we have to come up with a fallback plan to use the school facilities, that I would say would be even more distanced than auditorium, I would suggest that we look into what other counties are doing with the closed circuit TV. Are you aware of that option, Mr. Curry? Is that something that we can do?
We don't have the capability now. It would have to be fully developed, particularly with our historic courthouse. Dr. Grimsley is in the meeting, and we could potentially put her on the spot if the board would like to.
Well, we can talk to her during public comment.
Chair, could I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
To Mr. Perry. So when we advertise, let's say we go ahead and advertise, rather than, do we have to identify a specific location for the meeting? Or can we just say either/or location for now and then clarify later where the location will be?
There are two things we need to accomplish. The first is to notice the meeting from a FOIA perspective. And that simply has to be done three days in advance. But for the public hearings, they have a longer advertising requirement. And for the special exception, that has to be done twice a week in the paper. With the nearest one no closer than five days and the furthest one no more than 21 days. So it ends up being in the paper three weeks before the meeting because of our meeting's on Monday and, you know, the paper runs on Thursday. I don't know if that advertisement could have options. I would be very concerned that it would lead to confusion and confusion leading to somebody not showing up at the right place and then having some consternation with the decision that was made.
Exactly, okay. So it doesn't seem like it would be a really big problem to go ahead and advertise if it's the public hearing in the evening at the high school, seems to me.
Assuming it's available.
Right, right, of course. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson or Ms. Donahue, did you have any preferences?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I only have a question. If the Phase Two does occur, say by the 10th of June, and obviously, we're not going to know until probably Tuesday before, the way things keep happening, is it possible to have a meeting in June instead of waiting until July?
Not for the public hearings because you wouldn't have enough time to set the advertising date in the paper for the public hearing and have the notice time in the newspaper. So I'm thinking that we will, we will probably learn when Phase Two starts and then may have enough time to have the ads in the paper for the July timeframe. But even if, even if at the time of placing the ads, we're still in Phase One, it's very likely that by July 6th, we will be in Phase Two. So you could place that ad in anticipation of being in Phase Two on July 6th.
I'm fine with that.
Mr. Whitson?
Yeah, I guess my only question is administrative one. So let's say, Ms. Smith alluded to this possibility. What if, I mean, we're listening to public health officials and then science out of the state. So we've kind of pinned ourselves to the Phase Two start date as when we'll return back to normal meetings. What if, what if something really bad happens and we go back to Phase One? And we've already advertised to, and I hate to belabor this, but I just got to understand this. So we advertise that we're meeting in person. And then, you know, the third week of June, all hell breaks loose. And we have tons of infections. And people are going to say, what do we do? I mean, from a FOIA and advertising perspective, how do we remedy that and revert it back to what we're doing now?
FOIA would just need to be provided three-
Cancel the meeting.
Well, FOIA would need to be provided three days before the meeting so you could provide the updated meeting information. Same thing as if you had to move the meeting for some reason. Now, as far as the public hearings, it would be very similar to what happened with the Miller special exception the last time. It was advertised in the paper twice a week as required. But then, the meeting that the board held was electronic and it was, it was put off. It never made it on the agenda, quite frankly, because you talked about it the week before in kind of a COVID meeting and decided to defer it to a later time. And so you would waste money on advertising, basically is the answer.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, out of respect for my colleagues on the board who are more eager than me to reconvene public meetings because I think they all have valid points. Again, Ms. Smith has done a ton of legwork. I certainly think it would make sense to advertise for, advertise for an in-person Board of Supervisors meeting in July. And then we just have to be careful that if we get into a jam, these would be public health issues that we pivot as quickly as possible within the bounds of what FOIA allows in terms of preemptive notice to the public that we're changing our meeting. So I'm comfortable with that. And that way, we all have some certainty as to when we likely will be back to normal. And we also protect ourselves against not properly noticing meetings.
Well, that sounds like everyone's expectations have been discussed. And I'll just say that I will continue to work with Mr. Curry when we discuss the agenda and upcoming business for the July meeting. And that discussion to plan the meeting will include things that are always in the background, such as community safety and what kind of capacity we'll need for seating. Those are always things that we have in the background. Sometimes they're more in the forefront, depending on what the subject matter is for the meeting. So we will continue to bring this forward and continue to be focused on those as we move through the coming meetings and try to plan accordingly. Did you need any specific direction in regards to this, Mr. Curry? Or can we work through those additional details as those dates develop?
No, I don't believe so. I'll coordinate with Dr. Grimsley on availability of school buildings, and then we'll take it from there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Curry. And thank you, everyone, for your time. I know this has been sort of a lengthy agenda item, but it is the bulk of our agenda. And it takes us back up to, now we are getting to public comment. Thank you for, everyone, for bearing with us. The rules or expectations for public comment are the same as we discussed from the public hearing earlier, which is that at the beginning, once public comment period is opened, we'll ask if there's any written submissions to review. And then if you wish to participate on the electronic platform, there are three dots up in the upper right-hand corner of your screen where it says "more", or you can press *9 on your phone and be patched through. And if you raise your hand, the county administrator will be able to see that you wish to participate. And you will be acknowledged and your mic will be unmuted. And you will be welcome to comment. Please state your name for the record and the district that you're from. And we ask that you address your comments to the board and keep them to no more than five minutes. Did we receive any written comments for this portion of the meeting, Mr. Curry?
Yes, I have one.
Thank you.
And I'll read that into the record now. This is from George Millsaps, who is our Census, really not sure of his title, Partnership Specialist. He writes, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors, would like to take this opportunity to congratulate and thank the Chair of the Rappahannock County Complete Count Committee, Mr. David Chaffer, Mr. Curry, the members of the Rappahannock County Complete Count Committee, and the citizens of Rappahannock County for their efforts in supporting the 2020 Census. Due to the efforts of many, I am pleased to report that Rappahannock County has already exceeded its 2010 Census final self-response rate. A complete and accurate count of Rappahannock County will help ensure that your citizens will have appropriate representation. We're also aided in securing federal and state funding that is based on U.S. Census. Although this is a major milestone, there is still work to be done. I encourage you to contact your constituents and ask them to complete the 2020 Census online at 2020census.gov. Doing so will ensure an accurate final 2020 Census. It's the safest and easiest way to complete the Census. Again, congratulations on this accomplishment and thank you for your continued support. Respectfully, Dr. George Millsaps, Partnership Specialist.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. That's excellent news. And if that's the only written response that we've received or you haven't received anything at the office, we'll open up the public comment on the Zoom platform. Again, all you need to do is use the buttons in the top right-hand corner of your screen where it says "more". And underneath there, there's a dropdown where you can raise your hand. If you choose the raise hand option, you'll be identified and hatched in to speak. And you can also access the meeting to comment by dialing *9 on your phone. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
Yeah, but first is Dr. Grimsley.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Grimsley.
And she needs to unmute her mic. There we go.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Grimsley.
Okay, thank you, sorry, I have a little technical there. My name's Dr. Grimsley, Superintendent Schools, and also a resident of the Stonewall Hawthorne District. First and foremost, I want to thank the board so much for approving the supplemental appropriation for CARES Act funding. That will go a long way in stretching county dollars a lot further as well as allowing us to continue use of our CARES Act funding well beyond the FY '21 year, which we are allowed to do our federal funds. So I really, really appreciate that. And I also anticipate there'll be more requests coming your way as soon as we understand better with what the reopening of schools phases will look like. And I really hope people understand how much that also maximizes county impact with releasing tax dollars for other purposes, too. So it's just a wonderful collaboration, I appreciate it a lot. The other thing I wanted to mention was the newsletter I posted with the graduation scenarios. We have come a little bit further in understanding where, what kind of formats will be acceptable in July. So save the date for the weekend of July 10th and 11th. We sent out another survey to our seniors and their parents about a preferred format for graduation. And it looks as though social distancing will still have to play a large factor. And gatherings under, over 50 will still be prohibited in Phase Two, if that's where we're at. So the three scenarios we're looking at are a drive-through celebration, a drive-in graduation, or a model very similar to the Louisa model. If you looked at that, where we bring in about five graduates at a time in designated parking areas and bring one family in at a time and do a special graduation. But we would like the board's participation in some way in that, in those ceremonies. So I'll keep you posted as we narrow it down just a little bit more. But we're down to three formats and we're waiting for our senior and parent input. Pat, thank you so much for all you're doing, and I look forward to continuing your conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley.
Mr. Curry, do we have anyone else wishing to speak?
Next is Paige Glenny, Paige's iPhone.
Thank you.
I've asked him to unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Glenny, your mic should be unmuted.
Okay. Paige, what do you think, Mr. Whitson? An idea for you for the CARES funding in regards to first responders is they lost a lot of their fundraising incomes, specifically St. Maryville Fire, losing the Fourth of July, now Amistville, losing the carnival funding. So I was just wondering if that could be compensated using the CARES funding.
Thank you, Mr. Glenny. Did you have additional comments? We don't normally do question and answer during the comment period.
Why?
Because it's comment, it's not public question and answer.
No, I understand. Just let me put in your mind, all right?
I appreciate, and I will have a comment back, but I wanted to make sure I wasn't cutting off your time. You have five minutes, and I just didn't want to speak during your time.
Short and sweet.
Very good, thank you very much.
Next, you have Teresa Wood.
Yes, Teresa, you should be patched through.
Great, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you, Madam Chairman, board members. I'll try to make this brief. Thank you for taking the letter that I sent in earlier today in consideration. Also, before I go down that path, just a quick update on the project porta potty. Mr. Whitson was correct in saying that there were eight porta potties placed around the county today. I think he covered all of the locations except we did put two in Flint Hill behind the Skyward Cafe. Thanks to Bill Strain there. Anyway, in talking to people in the community, business owners, they seem to be very much on board with this project. It does relieve them with staffing to clean the bathrooms every hour as mandated by the Health Department. It also reduces the risk of infection to their staff members and employees. So thank you all for your support on that project. And by the way, this is Teresa Wood, representing businesses in Rappahannock. And I do reside in the Hamptons, which is great. Very quickly, the letter that I submitted to you all today was important to businesses in Rappahannock. Obviously, are our businesses and business owners. But we have to remember that those folks are also residents of this county for the most part. Probably more than 95% of our business owners actually reside here. So any funding that we can push forward to help businesses, they have- they have definitely sustained a very serious hit during the last three months. And it is much appreciated. We are very much interested in making sure that we use any dollars that might be for advertising so that we can get the multiplier effect so that the dollars are used wisely and spent in a way that will benefit others as well. Dressing Mr. Frazier's comment about the grant program, I will just say this, that businesses in Rappahannock did partner with Rappahannock communities and we administered a grant program of over $100,000. We gave out over, now over 100 rapid response $1,000 grants. People who participated in that, business owners, had two questions to answer. Do you have a business in Rappahannock? And if so, were you impacted negatively by COVID-19 pandemic? It went very smoothly. There were no pitches. I think maybe one person that applied did not receive a grant just because they couldn't prove that they're a business in the county. With that said, there is still a great need in the community. Yes, people have received federal funding, but there's still a need for some more financial support. Additionally, with regard to the advertising, I would just encourage you all to take this under advisement as quickly as possible. Every municipality in the state of Virginia is going to be competing for tourism dollars. And I think that if you start to drill down with our businesses, you will find that people who thought that they were tourist-based know that for sure now. People who thought they were not tourist-based have found out that once or twice removed, their business is definitely impacted by tourism, whether they're an accountant in this community and now their tourist-based clients are not using their services. It's definitely a trickle-down effect in a small community such as this. So I would say to you that we have to get on board pretty quickly with that advertising campaign, a "Welcome Back or We're Open for Business Again" campaign, if we want to shoot for dollars in the fall from visitors to this community and to get people out here. As I said, every community in Virginia will be competing for the same dollars, tourism dollars. And I've spoken with the Virginia Tourism Corporation and they're on board with helping us as well formulate an effective campaign. A campaign like this really needs to go into effect no later than August 1st. So we have a very short suspense on projects such as this. So thank you very much again for your time. I really appreciate your consideration and look forward to discussing this further. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Teresa. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I do not see any others with hands raised.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. And with that, close the public comment period. That takes us, I believe, to the consent agenda, items F1 through 4.
Correct.
And with that, I know it's become our practice that if anyone has any concerns about any item on the consent agenda, we will pull that item out so we can take up the rest of the consent agenda. Does anyone have any concerns that would cause us to remove an item from this agenda?
Mr. Frazier does have his hand up.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Curry, for recognizing that. I do have a question about the accounts payable, so I thought maybe we could just pull that.
Well, that is our practice. If anyone has a question about any of them, we automatically pull that agenda item out until we take out F2 and do that separately. Does anyone have any concerns about any of the other items on this which would be supplemental appropriations that they continue to spread to process?
Madam Chair, if anyone else has any more questions, I could put the consent agenda in the form of a motion for approval.
As amended, removing the accounts payable line item?
That's correct. Thank you.
Or accounts payable item? Very good. Do I have a second?
Chair Whitson, Hampton District, Representative for the Public Sector.
Thank you. Mr. Curry, I believe we can wait and make our statements after we have voted on this and before we do the accounts payable. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you very much. With that, we have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda, except for item 2, the accounts payable. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
And Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. That takes us to the accounts payable item attached to this. And before we get too far afield in that discussion, I think we should probably read the disclosure statement that's attached to the agenda. Mr. Frazier, would you like to read that in first?
I don't think we need to read it because I don't think these attorneys represent the Board. I've made that before. I've made a statement before.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. I mean, this is suggested for folks to read it in. Whether or not people read it in is up to them.
I understand that. There's nothing to prove to me that they actually represent any member of this Board except for one right now.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Donahue?
Yes, thank you. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115.h, as a Board of Supervisor member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bradone case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the Board of Supervisors. I certify that my involvement and action is as a group of three or more members of the Board of Supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Whitson?
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115.h, as a Board of Supervisors member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bradone case. The nature of my potential interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the Board of Supervisors. I certify that my involvement and action is as a group of three or more members of the Board of Supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest. I think that put everyone to sleep, I'm glad.
I think you're having a little technical difficulty. Mr. Curry, did you get that?
I, yes.
Can you do that again?
I did hear all that. It may have been a blip in your internet. It did come through here.
Very good. I will ask Mr. Parrish if he would like to read it into the record then as well.
Thank you. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115.h, as a Board of Supervisors member, I have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bradone case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual and member of the Board of Supervisors. I certify that my involvement and action is as a group of three or more members of the Board of Supervisors, which are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115.h, as a Board of Supervisors member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bradone case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the Board of Supervisors. I certify that my involvement and action is as a group of three or more members of the Board of Supervisors, which are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest. So with having read that in, I have a motion that relates to the accounts payable that is attached to the agenda.
For discussion purposes, I'd move that we put it in the form of a movement for discussion, possible adoption.
Is that approval of the three separate accounts payables as listed in the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Do I have a second?
Chair Whitson, for discussion, I'll second Mr. Frazier's motion.
Very good. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the table for purposes of discussion for the approval of the accounts payable items in the agenda. It sounds like there will be some robust discussion on this agenda item. And Mr. Frazier, you made the motion, so I'll ask you to start.
Just like, as the Board knows, y'all read the declaration because there's an invoice in there for Walker Jones. It's a small amount of money, $280. But it brings us to a point of discussion, I think. It's been now 11 weeks since the March 5th opinion from Judge Parker came down, roughly give a day or two because of, you know, the mail or whatever. But we've had no discussion as a Board with any of these attorneys. We've had no communication from them as a Board unless, of course, somebody else is getting communications and I'm not. And I just thought I'd bring that to the Board's attention. And here we are, we are, you know, 11 weeks into this thing. And now we're going to pay another invoice for Mr. Brown's work. It's a small amount of work, you know, 15 minutes here and there, but it's almost, you know, every two or three days that he's been communicating back and forth with Mr. Goff and Mr. Luke, charging the county taxpayers for it. And we have no involvement in this. We don't know what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Donahue, I look to you to see what you think about this.
I'm trying to pull up that particular invoice because I thought they were from like March or something, that they were just paying.
In March 22nd through, I think, April 20th. But there's been no communication with the Board. The only communication I've seen at all about this was where the two county attorneys were handing it by the newspaper.
Mr. Curry, by any chance, do you have that detail that you could pull up?
I don't have it very easily able to pull up on the screen. I have a hard copy in front of me.
I mean, to me, I'm one of those people who believe in paying your bills when you have bills. Whether we're disputing whether the work was done or not is another question, I guess.
Certainly, would you agree that we shouldn't be paying bills if we don't know what's going on?
If we don't believe the work was done for the Board, I would agree, but we need to...
I'm not saying the work wasn't done for the Board, but how could it be done for the Board if we don't know what's going on? I mean, we just read this declaration. The Board members read the declaration. It reads, "in the public interest". What public interest is being handled here? That's my question. We don't know what's going on as a Board. How in the world can we function?
I think it was, I think it's, I think we've decided it's... I've asked Ms. Donahue to share her opinion. And I know this is a difficult medium to have a discussion, but I would like to hear from everybody in turn. And then I think we'll have an understanding of where we're at with this. Ms. Donahue, what were you saying? That you just feel like we received the bill and so we need to pay the bill?
Unless we're disputing that the work that Walker Jones is billing us for was not done. I mean, I don't get into the phone bills either, but I know Mr. Curry looks at those before we do. You know, I can't personally challenge what the attorney is billing us for. If our county attorney thinks we're being billed incorrectly, maybe that's another issue.
I have placed the invoice on the screen.
I don't want to take up all this time, but maybe I'm not articulating my question. It's not a matter of whether or not the invoice has been received, whether the work was done, but surely no one on the Board could have instructed the attorney to keep working on this in whatever manner it is because we've had no communication for 11 weeks about this topic. This bill could be 10 times this amount, I think, because we've had no function. We don't even know what's going on.
I think we, I think we're going to get to something on this, Mr. Frazier, but I think it's important that we take turns discussing it or else I'm afraid that it will devolve to the discussion level that I've heard the Planning Commission had issues with. That we do really need to respect the format. We need to take a turn speaking. And I think, I think I need to let Ms. Donahue conclude her remarks and then we need to let Mr. Whitson and Mr. Parrish and I have a turn. And then we can see where we stand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue, did you have anything additional to add?
No, I'd be interested in hearing the rest of the conversation.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson?
Sure. I've said it before, when Mr. Frazier's questioned these bills, that we pay our bills and if you have, as Ms. Donahue already explained, you have concerns about what we're being billed and for what, then we should ask that question. That's certainly Mr. Frazier's prerogative. In terms of communication about what activities are embedded within this invoice, I can certainly speak from my direct professional experience that typically, when you are representing, when you're representing a person or a company, as you send a bill and their in-house counsel typically, in the case of a corporation, would review that bill. And here, here we are, a client, and our in-house counsel is Mr. Goff. And Mr. Goff would be tasked with reviewing these invoices on our behalf for accuracy. And obviously, I think we all, as being demonstrated by this discussion, take seriously the accounts payable and our obligation to pay our bills on time. As far as I understand it, there's litigation that concluded only recently. I'm looking at this invoice and there's nothing in here concerning the run check run is this month, is north of, I'm just looking at right now what's on my screen, $227,000. And $227,000, and what was the total amount on this bill? Mr. Curry?
$280.
$280 and we're talking $227,000 in accounts payable for one check run. So my point is that as we did during the budget process and there is a move to turn a pay increase for a county attorney or a request for one into a discussion of personnel performance, I would just ask that we stick to a question of paying the bills or not paying the bills and not turning it into a larger discussion. There is an agenda item, I believe, on review of litigation. I don't know if we'll get into that today, but I don't think, I don't think going into questions about what's going on in an ongoing, in ongoing litigation is really germane to a question of paying the bills. I appreciate Mr. Frazier's perspective. He's got a long history with all of this, I don't. But I just think we should just look at this from a pay-to-bill perspective and leave it at that. And if we want to talk about litigation and services provided therein, then let's do that in the appropriate place in the agenda. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Parrish?
Well, all I know is what I see here. Apparently, he reviewed some emails and there was some kind of FOIA request. there was some kind of FOIA request, and I have no idea what it's for. So, I mean, yeah, I get, I get those, like, from my accountant that I wonder about, but I don't dare not tell him, so I really don't have anything. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. I find myself very divided. I clearly share your concerns, Mr. Frazier, that we have not had communication since court date with our legal advisors. But I find that in this electronic forum, we are bound to matters that are COVID-19 related in our discussion, and it's just another reason that we should get back to holding these in person. And so while I completely understand why we need to have this discussion, and wish we could have it at length, I do not find that I am able to further undertake this discussion at this time.
If I could have a brief follow-up?
I think it's too far afield of the COVID-19 discussion that we are bound to essential business only, and I think this strays from, I think this strays from that subject. It's not that I don't sympathize, it's just that our hands are tied.
If I could have a brief follow-up, then I'll, as a horse owner, I won't beat a dead horse here.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
I think, and you know, Mr. Kieran, with all due respect, and I appreciate your position, but at the same time, you've trivialized what I'm bringing forward here. What we have here is a situation where we have attorneys working on something, some sort of, I guess, direction of their own, because the Board has not had any input in this direction. And that's what I'm trying to get at here. And I don't know how in the world we can say that we can't have discussions about anything unless it's COVID-related, but we're supposed to pay a bill that's not COVID-related. So, I mean, either we don't pay these bills that are COVID-related, or we pay them if we have questions about them, we have to question them. That just makes sense to me. If we're going to pay the bill and we have to have discussions...
Excuse me, sir.
Yes? We seem to have lagged a bit. Mr. Frazier, if you're done with your comments, Mr. Whitson, let's wrap this up. I'm so sorry. Please go ahead.
Madam Chair, I think we all recognize that there is no provision that allows us to only pay bills for items that are COVID-19 related. I don't understand, and understand that comment. We need to pay our bills. I understand Mr. Frazier's very sensitive to this. I don't understand why we're having, as he put it, beat the dead horse discussion, over $280 bill when we're paying over a quarter million dollars in a check run in one month. And I'm happy to go through the bill with Mr. Goff and Mr. Frazier together to understand what's in there. It all looks like a normal litigation-related communication bill at a tenth of an hour. It's a very conservative bill, from what I can tell. These look like wrap-up items following the conclusion of break one, is what I would suspect. And I really don't quite understand why this has become such a big issue. And I, but I do want to say, I respect Mr. Frazier very much as a colleague, and by no means meant to trivialize it, but simply wanted to raise my concerns because it was brought up in this discussion. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, one last comment, and I'll leave.
Yes, Mr. Frazier.
The fact that the Board, for four years, did not get involved in this, it has cost the county taxpayers $138,000 cumulative. So it's a little bit of money, but it's because of the same actions we did not follow through with our fiscal responsibility that we should have. And that's, you know, where are we going? That's my question. Where are we going? We're for 11 weeks.
Well, if we are able to have a meeting, either a full meeting or a meeting with the fiscal part in July, I think we can undertake this discussion further at that time. And with that, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the accounts payable as presented in the packet.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I apologize to interrupt you. I actually had my own accounts payable questions that I was hoping to raise, and I apologize, and I'll be quick. It's just superseded by Mr. Frazier's very valid inquiry, but I wonder if we could quickly go through them.
Quickly, Ms. Emmett, Mr. Curry, hopefully you can answer any of those quickly, and we can get this approved.
Yeah, no, I apologize. Yeah, go ahead. So, Mr. Curry, just very quickly, there are three expenditures, pretty significant, Rapid Bank, Association, Arts in the Community, RAL, and the Historical Society is one group. That's question number one. What are those? Number two, in the May 11th check run, the U.S. Postal Service.
How about we do one at a time? Why don't we take one question at a time?
Okay, go ahead.
So, RAL has an annual contribution from the county. This is a monthly allotment. RAC is the fiscal agent for the Artisan Alliance, which is the local replacement organization for the Artisan Trail. And there was one other in there. What was the other?
Historical Society.
Historical Society has $5,000 allocation on the Board, annually in the budget, and this is their payment, having just received their invoice for the year.
Okay, I got you. So that's for the fiscal year that's about to end?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's question one. Question two, U.S. Postal Service. I only want, because there's a lot of public concern about the status of the post office in the town of Washington, I trust this is probably postage and wholly unrelated to anything going on with the post office, but I just want to confirm the $1,436 in the May 11th check run. Just confirm what that is.
Correct. It's for the electoral board, and that was the mailing of the applications for absentee ballot.
Okay. Am I correct? That's a relatively unusual expenditure. I recall seeing Postal Service, you know, most of our check runs.
Yes, it is an unusual expenditure.
Okay. And then the next thing I'd like to mention, and I've mentioned it before, I think, at one of our first meetings, in light of our likely constrained revenue going forward due to the COVID-19 crisis, want to put on everyone's radar, at least my ongoing concern about these century-linked bills, we are, as far as I can tell, we're spending 10, probably 40, 40,000 a year on phone technology to your phone service. So, given that we're going to be in a revenue pinch going forward, when we get back to normal, we can get beyond these essential business discussions, let us please think about revamping our telecom system in the county. To me, this is just inexcusable. And that's just a comment. I don't need anything. And then finally, Mr. Curry, I just wanted to know if we could draw any apples to apples, or apples to pears, or apples to oranges comparison from the bill for Page County, which I assume relates to the moving out of the roll-offs that they so kindly brought to us at the end of our contract for a relationship with our other vendor, and if that can be compared to the efficient bill. One is $51,000, in the case of efficient, and then there's a bill for 15 per Page County. Are those comparable at all, or are they represented different time periods?
Efficient is about a month and a half, and Page County is more than it will ultimately be because they're hauling the roll-off containers rather than compacted waste, where there'll be much fewer trips. So, we should not see any more invoices from uptight efficient community trash, except for our dumpster service. And we will be transitioning now into much more affordable service, particularly after the compacters are installed. And just, although you didn't ask for any comment on the telephones, that is an area I'm looking at to see if there's a way that CAREZAC dollars can be invested in that area, because it would enable us to more easily work from afar. Right now, it'd be hard to forward phones to outside, to home, or whatever. So if there's a way we can link those two, it may be able to bring that investment into upgrading our infrastructure.
Well, that's great. That's great. Thank you for mentioning that. Thanks for your time. I apologize, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Does anyone else have any questions related to the accounts payable item? Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve these items. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Help me unmute. Hold on. Sorry.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish, and I also. That takes us through the consent agenda items, the approval of the accounts payable that was called out. To our next agenda item, old business, solid waste management operation discussion ensues. I'll turn that over to Mr. Curry, please.
Yes, thank you. The Board of Supervisors said in an earlier meeting authorized the award of the contracts to Baker's Waste for the containers and for the compacters, and those have all been ordered, and we expect everything in by the middle of June. On a parallel path, you authorized a full budget for site work changes that were necessary. And I've been busy sending out invitations for bid for civil and electrical work at Amistville and Flatwood. And all of those four projects, civil and electrical one, and civil and electrical the other, three of them had a cost below $10,000, so I was able to make that award. But our local code, Chapter 43.5 Statutory requires the Board to make awards that are over $10,000. The civil work at Amistville is a little bit more involved, and its low bid is $19,600 from Weaver Works, a company out of Madison. And I'm asking the Board to make that award so we can get on with that work and get those compacters installed and pay Page just a little bit less every month.
Thank you. So that would be your preference for the Weaver Works bid than the lower bid?
Well, we're bound to take the lower bid by code for these sorts of things.
Very good. Mr. Frazier, I know I've leaned on you heavily in this meeting, but this is in your district in particular, so I would wonder if you would want to comment first or last?
Well, I can comment first. I think Mr. Curry's done the legwork necessary for us to go ahead and vote on this today. We need to get it, we need to get it done and get it in place.
Ms. Donahue?
I would prefer that Frazier, the citizens of Rapid Panic will be thrilled when all of this is up and running if we have it placed out.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Whitson?
Sorry, you've muted.
I apologize. My stream was broken up there. Could you repeat the question?
We were just wondering if you had any comments on the agenda item I want, the solid waste management operation discussion, and the bid that's attached to the agenda today.
No, I think we've vetted all of this quite thoroughly, and again, I want to express my appreciation to Mr. Curry for all he's done and pieced it together. I will mention, I was at Flatwood this morning, and impressively, Judge Levin, who actually oversees the Battle Creek landfill, was there himself, driving a truck and pulling one of our 40-foot containers. So the level of dedication there is, so far, really a good sign for our future relationship overall with Page County. But as far as, as far as additional approvals, I think Mr. Curry's doing an incredible job, and whatever we do to get out of his way to just get this done, I think we'll all benefit, and most importantly, the citizens as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, I appreciate the good job that Curry's doing with this. And also, I hate to say this, but if I'm not, if it's possible, I would like to leave the meeting. I have a lot of hay on the ground. I'm not actually essential. I'd like permission to leave the meeting. Can I do that?
Well, I think we have a quorum without you. Mr. Curry, is there any reason you can see where, why Mr. Parrish couldn't excuse himself?
No, and I imagine you're very close to voting on this action item. There's really no other action items.
Exactly. No, please, Mr. Parrish, thank you for correcting that.
Okay.
It's a beautiful day to be hay while the sun shines, as they say.
I got to do it. All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you so much. And I would just concur that Mr. Curry has been doing a very good job, especially with the time crunch that we were given to implement a system, basically having to implement something within three to five days. And I know it was not necessarily a smooth changeover, but I think in the transition since that time, I have heard nothing but good comments about the improvements at Flatwood and Amistville, and how pleased people are with the service that we are receiving from Page County. So I think we should definitely get this work done and continue to make things better at both sites. Do I have a motion as it relates to this agenda item?
So move, Madam Chair. Ron Frazier?
Okay, so we're looking to, it's a motion to adopt the low bid for Amistville refuse to recycling from Weaver Works as is presented in the agenda today. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, this is Debbie from Wakefield District. I have a second.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. With that, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I also. And we struck item J1, and then we just have information reports and correspondence-related items, which feel free to reach back to staff if you have questions relating to any of those particular agenda items. And then we have item L1, matters presented by the Board. And I just did want to take a moment to respond to a point that was made during public comment. And I have reached out to Stray River Fire already. Informally, I will do so in a more formal way, just to ask about any shortfalls in revenue that may experience as a result of cancellation of fireworks. And that is a very good point, and, you know, we have to consider all the needs that may not be met this year as a result of COVID-19. I didn't know if any other Board members had anything for this discussion, and just please bear in mind that we do have to be pretty narrow in our scope of discussion on this topic. Mr. Whitson?
I demure. You'll be relieved to know I have nothing to say on this point.
I don't know that that's true, but thank you, Mr. Whitson. Ms. Donahue?
The only thing I was going to bring up was the census, because I have citizens asking why they didn't receive something in the mail, or how were they supposed to find out about it. And I think the letter Mr. Curry read said we're doing pretty well, but it sounds like you can go online or call. All you need is your address to do the census. It's really simple, and it's better than having people come knock on your door and jaw.
And let me jump on the bandwagon here and say that the county has purchased ad space in the Rapid Panic News the last several weeks, funded by a grant from the state, and that ad does include the phone number and the web address if people want to go on and self-register. While we've beaten our percentage from 2010, it's still not very good relative to the state average, so we've got work to do.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Mr. Frazier?
Nothing.
Thank you. And I would just, in terms of the census discussion, I did do the census online and filled out the questions. It took all of about two minutes. So for anybody that's wondering how difficult or easy it is, I would encourage you to do that as well. It will help us progress the link with revenue streams in the future. If no one has anything else for discussion, that takes us to item N1, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So move. Thank you, Ms. Donahue, and do I have a second? Well, for ease of discussion, I'll second that motion. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue? Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.